Welcome to About the Facts Podcast with Brittany and Mike. A podcast designed to educate, navigate, and empower you to become an advocate for your family, yourself, and your community. We uncover the facts and dive into the issues that prevent people like you and me from thriving. You'll gain the tools and the insights to ask the right questions, challenge the system, and stand up for what's right. Get ready to be informed, inspired, and empowered because the power to advocate starts with you. Let's get to it.
It's an amazing day and welcome to About the Facts Podcast. I'm your host, Mike Shelton.
And I am Brittany Grant. If it's your first time tuning in, welcome to About the Facts Podcast. We are primarily an interview-based podcast where we bring in thought leaders, change agents, and politicians to just talk about their platforms and what they want to do in the community.
Absolutely, and let me just, not only do we talk to those thought leaders, we are talking to people that are dealing with day-to-day issues on a day-to-day basis. We want to help those people that don't have attorneys, that don't have those advocates in their life, teach them how to be the best self-advocate for themselves. Our goal is to educate you, to help you navigate and help you be the self-best self-advocate you can be for your family, yourself, and your community. And we feel like we can do that by making sure that we have those thought leaders on this show on a day-on-a-weekly basis.
Absolutely, so we have gone through a series of Word Seven Council, council races.
We've got so much great feedback and we're so grateful to those candidates. So who are those people?
We've had Masood Haq come on, we've had Kamal Pennington, we've had John Pettis Jr., and Andrea Holman, yes.
Andrea Holman, we're grateful for them coming on and all of them did a fabulous job. We want you to tune in to those shows. You can find those shows on...
On our YouTube and Spotify right now and all of our major platforms. So we are streaming on all of our social media platforms. So follow us, make sure you follow, share, and then tune in to those episodes.
Let me just tell you, I'm getting calls every day of people saying, hey, when can I sign up? And so we got, you don't know this, but we're about to have our first national speaker, the National Black Caucus of State Legislators President-elect that's about to come into office. So we're excited about her, longtime friend. She is Senator Akbari out of Tennessee. And so we are going to be talking about national politics and, and black elected officials. And so I'm really excited about having that discussion with her.
Yeah.
So let me just say this, it's a lot going on, it's a lot that has happened. Of course, the elected officials came on here, but we just had, we just had the inauguration. And President Trump has been elected and inaugurated into the presidency. He's the fourth president back in office. But more importantly, I think it's more important to make sure that our listeners understand why it's important for these elected officials, these people running for office, to be on podcasts like About the Facts Podcast so they can be heard, their positions can be heard, and people can get a bigger in-depth. Why don't you tell people why you feel like it's good?
I've been a candidate before and when you go to forums, you have like a two-minute, a one-minute opener, opening statement, and then you just have a minute to answer the question or a minute, two minutes to answer the question. It doesn't give real value into, or insight into what your, what your platforms are and how you really feel and how you're going to help the community. So it's important that we give candidates a platform to be able to talk about their issues, to talk about their platforms, and you get to kind of know them and feel them on a, on a personal basis.
A couple of days ago, we heard from Sarah Bana. She's a candidate for Oklahoma County Commissioner, District One. We have also gonna, you'll be hearing from Jed Green as well. He's also running for Oklahoma County District One. A position that's been opened. It's been a lot of political change recently, and that election's on February 11th. And we want to make sure that everybody's empowered because let me tell you, I know firsthand of people's, because we had a bad election or people felt they're winners and losers in this election cycle in November, there were a lot of people turned off on how it came out. And they've thrown their hands up on how, if they're going to be engaged in politics anymore, or they're saying, I'm done, I'm done. But this is when you need to be doubled down on getting engaged because it's really these elections that deal with your day-to-day life. And we want to make sure that you know that this Oklahoma County District One race is so important to the people of Oklahoma. The city council race is so important, but we'll be talking to people that are running for school board or chair, and those positions are so important. I have the privilege of sitting on Oklahoma City School Board, and I can tell you, there is probably no more important position than Oklahoma City School Board in affecting the day-to-day lives and the future of our children.
Absolutely.
So let me just say, we're really excited about what's going on. Hey, somebody's at the door, let's see who's here. We have Jason, State Representative Jason Lo joining us. We're glad you're here, we're glad you're here. Thank you so, thank you so much for being here.
Oh, it's a pleasure, it's a pleasure.
Jason, you're a candidate for Oklahoma County District One.
Yes, I am, a candidate for District One. The election is February 11th, we're excited, we're ready to go.
Now, let me just say this, you've, you've carried on some big shoes in the house. My predecessor, everyone. I was talking about Kevin Cox, I was talking about myself, I was talking about Kevin Cox. But, but you, but let me tell you, you've done a good job and I'm, I'm proud of you. I'm proud of the work that you've done while you've been in the House District 97. The best district in the state of Oklahoma. We're so honored to have you here on About the Facts Podcast. You know, because you got in office in 2016.
Yes, 2016.
You came in, so, so you've been in 10 ye...
Eight years, eight years. And I remember our first conversation when I got elected, you told me it's going to go by so fast. And I was like, ah, whatever, whatever, but it's eight years, it has gone by very quickly. So it's just been an honor and pleasure to serve the best district in the state of Oklahoma with its House District.
Right.
Absolutely, so Jason, tell us about yourself and then tell us why you wanted to run for county.
Okay, a little bit about myself, I'm a practicing attorney. I've been practicing law since 2005, and you can see the gray here now, I'm an old man. I primarily, primarily practice criminal law and family law. I'm also State Representative for the best district in the state of Oklahoma, House District 97. I was elected in 2016. I serve on the House Judiciary Committee, which is the most powerful, I believe, powerful committee in the state of Oklahoma because it deals with criminal laws. It deals with what goes on in our daily lives. I'm a big believer in rehabilitation as opposed to incarceration. I see every single day our young men and women being sent off to prison for nonviolent offenses. I say, I spend forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year housing an eighteen-year-old in prison when you can get them a job, when you can get the rehabilitation, and when you can make sure that they're productive citizens. So I'm a big believer in second chances.
And I can attest to that. So Jason's firm has partnered with a diversion hub to be able to put people back to work and back into the workforce. So I commend you for the work that you do and, and you know, putting people, like you said, you put the mental health before incarceration, so.
Yeah, let me just say this, so I talked about when we opened up today that the inauguration just passed, but it was also Martin Luther King holiday. I'm just gonna, with all the changes in our, our history books, why do you think Martin Luther King is still important in 2025?
Well, you know, in some ways, I think we're kind of, you know, going back, backwards. It's unfortunate, you know, with the election that just took place and, you know, they're, they're trying to, you know, not allow African-Americans to learn their history as far as taking books out of schools. It's unfortunate, you know, even without jail system that's taking place currently locally. You know, I had a client who's nineteen years old, and she was at the county jail. She was arrested on a Friday evening, and she was arrested for this amount of marijuana, and she posted bond that Friday night, but she was released on Thursday. So Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday morning, being released. And this is a UCL student, and most importantly, she was away from her family because there's no visitation at the Oklahoma County Jail. You're not allowed to visit an inmate at the Oklahoma County Jail, that's crazy. And this person was away from her school, she lost her job, and most importantly, she was away from her family. So things like that should not occur, and that's what's happening, not only in Oklahoma County, that's happening throughout the state of Oklahoma, that's happening throughout the, the country. And that's why people like Martin Luther King, who have fought and fought, and civil rights leaders, we got to focus on rehabilitation, we got to focus on our criminal justice system. So people like that is just so very important, where they have laid the groundwork for people like me to own the law firm, to run for office.
And carry on the work they've done.
Yes, you know, so it's just amazing.
So running for office, District One, we know is so bad. Kind of the towns that fall within the district.
Yes, yes, you know, and first of all, you know, I didn't think I was going to run for this position. I didn't know it was going to open up. You know, Carrie Blumer resigned, and I decided to run for this seat based on Oklahoma County, you know, what's going on. But this district is huge. There's Forest Park, there's Dell City, there's Midwest City, there's Oklahoma City, all of northeast Oklahoma City. You know, I'm in District 97, I thought it was a big district, but this district, District One is huge, there's a lot of ground to cover as far as knocking on doors, as far as meeting voters. But I'm excited, I'm excited to meet the, my hopefully future constituents in, in all of the other areas. It's been an exciting time, so I'm happy about it.
So Jason, first of all, thank you for your answers again, thank you for being here. The job of County Commissioner is extremely complex. I mean, of course, you got your hand in the jail, you have your hand in the towns within, within the area, you got a thousand Oklahoma County employees, you got thirty employees of you, you'll have thirty employees of your own with District One. Can you please just kind of give an idea of what a County Commissioner does?
Oh wow, there's a lot of hats that a County Commissioner wears. One is roads and bridges, definitely the Oklahoma County Jail, of course. We got to figure out whether that's going to be built or refurbished. We don't, we just don't know at this point in time. And also, social services, they provide social services for individuals that are injured. So the County Commissioner does a lot of things, including infrastructure, economic development, figuring out who gets contracts. I'm a big believer in a set of size for minority businesses, making sure that folks that look like me and also women have an unfair playing field, how about that? And making sure that those jobs are available to everyone, not just a certain segment of the population.
Oklahoma County, County Commissioners' offices across Oklahoma have been known to fix deals. And matter of fact, this was the face of the United States being the biggest scandal in the whole country of government corruption in the early eighties. And so we don't want to go back.
Yes, we're going to follow the law, I'm an attorney, we will follow the law.
So tell us, how is campaign going, what are you hearing on the doors?
As you see, I need a haircut, okay? It's been tough out here, it's been tough, you know, you know, I, I work full-time. I still have clients that I have to service and help. You know, lives are at stake, I take that very seriously, so that's a priority for me. I had a jury trial last week, you know, so those things are important, making sure people are not sent off to prison for nonviolent offenses and people who are innocent. Because trust me, there are innocent people in prison. So, but being on the doors, I, I love it, I, I love knocking doors, I love talking to my constituents in District 97 and District 99, it seems like they know me over there as well.
He's talking about District 97, but let me just put 99 real quick because that's where I live, working place.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Yeah, 99, you know, I, I love it, Dell City, Midwest City, we were, we were there as well last week actually. So I'm excited, I'm excited talking to the voters. Their main, the main question they ask me, Oklahoma County Jail, where is it going to be built? Why are people dying every, seem like every other month at the Oklahoma County Jail, which is an unfortunate situation? You should not die going to the jail, you should not die, you know, being arrested on a nonviolent offense or any offense. You should not die just being in an institution, it's unfortunate.
We've had deputies hailed hostage.
Yes, yes.
A lot going on.
A lot going on at the county jail, and I want to make sure that I fix it. I understand that the County Commissioners don't control the jail, the jail trust does, but I believe that we have a lot of leverage to get things done. So I want to do that, I want to make sure that we follow the evidence, we follow the facts, and we follow the law, and that's what I plan on doing.
So Jason, what I do know for a fact is there's a lot of people turned off on politics right now.
Yes.
Because their person didn't win this past November or for what, they're just turned off by politics. So for all those people that are turned off by politics because their person didn't win, my question to you is, is what advice would you give those people to say, this, this is, this election matters, you need to put that aside and get to the polls on February 11th?
Yes, get to work, we need to get to work. You know, the most disheartening thing, and it's happened to me recently, is knocking on a door and an eighteen-year-old kid comes out and says, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if I vote or not, nothing is going to change. We got to make sure we get to the young folks, we got to engage them, we got to make sure that they know the importance of local elections. You know, that was a national election, local elections are so very important because those deals with, those elections deal with roads and bridges, they deal with just local things that can affect you, local, say, jobs, bridges, water, you know, just local things that really affect individuals. So we got to make sure that we still remain engaged. There's going to be an election in two years as well, there's going to be an election in four years, so we just cannot give up the fight. And we definitely got to get out and vote on February 11th and make sure that our voices are heard. Our ancestors died for that fight, so we got to make sure that we get out there.
Okay, so we know, we just talked about roads and bridges and infrastructure. As a part, there's members of the County Budget Board that makes up all elected, elected of county officers that decide the overall county budget. So what do you perceive your priorities will be with that budget if you're elected?
Oh wow, great question. I think the priorities, the two priorities are going to be definitely roads and bridges, and the third would be at the jail. And I think lastly, I think I could add another one in there, the county courthouse, which has fallen apart. The county courthouse is a place where individuals go to court, obviously, and see a judge, but most of the time, the elevators are not even working. I've talked to judges where there's major leaks in their offices, water leaks in their offices. Then they can't really service individuals, get people out of jail quickly because we want to make sure people go in and out of jail as fast as possible. So we got to make sure our judge, our county courthouses are functional.
So Jason, County Commissioners are widely known for their responsibility of building and repairing. You just talked about that, safeguarding the public roads, bridges, and school routes. What are your qualifications for honoring this duty? And are your pla, what are your plans for District One's infrastructure?
Oh wow, okay, that's a good question. My plan, based on infrastructure, is obviously the roads and bridges. I talked to a constituent in Spencer probably two weeks ago, and he told me his road has not been paved in forty years, come on. You know, so he was like, hey, Jason, okay, I'm going to vote for you. But hey, this is an issue for me, this is an issue for people out there, and Spencer. I want to make sure that we service individuals like that, so yeah, that's definitely a priority.
And I believe that wholeheartedly, that there's a lot of, those small towns depend on Oklahoma County because Oklahoma County is their street team. They pave their roads, they provide the, the crews to get their streets redone. So often, Oklahoma County, the money follows the voters because there's not many voters out there. It seems like they don't focus the, the money out there. Because that Spencer Hicks edition that you know very well, out there with our friend Vivian Miller.
Oh yeah.
And she has talked about this for a long time, they've been neglected.
Neglected, and, and as a person that has served on the Transportation Committee, I know how the money comes from the federal government, goes down to the state, and then trickles down to the local municipalities. So I want to make sure that's done. I've worked with one of my favorite senators, Senator Regina Goodwin, on issues such as that. In Greenwood, there's a highway that they usually build in black communities in Greenwood, there's a highway that's in the middle of the community, and she's working hard to get those things removed, particularly that particular highway removed. Things like that I've learned about as far as making sure that our community is whole and, and towns like Spencer is going to be on top of my, on the top of my list and making sure that they get the services they need and also that they deserve.
So we know that the new jail and rental facility is a hot topic right now. So where do you envision or where do you feel like the new location should be?
Well, I've always advocated from day one, from day one, that the jail should remain where it is. There's a parking lot right behind the current site. The current site is in close proximity to all of the courthouses, municipal court, district court, diversion hubs, bus stations, everything, even the police station is right across the screen. So I believe that the Oklahoma County Jail should be, should remain where it is. Right now, there's an issue as far as funding. I know that we approved a $260 million bond, so there's $260 million out there. But to build a jail, they've indicated it's probably going to cost near $700 million. I don't know what they're trying to build a fort, I don't, I don't know what it is. But I, I don't think we need to build a jail that costs $700 million. We need to build a, a, a smaller facility.
So Jason, going along with the, just piggybacking on the jail, the jail trust is the best show on reality TV. There's so much going on at the jail trust meetings, we've lost two CEOs. There's so much going on, and if anybody's not seen the videos from the jail trust or gone to the jail trust meeting, it is a show.
It's a circus.
It's a circus, and I always, I watch it with my mouth open because you never know what you're going to see on that, and it makes me feel bad for those members because, because it's volunteer role, and unfortunately, I don't think it was well-planned out, and they were not given the empowerment they need to fix the jail. But before there was a jail trust, we just started the jail trust in 2020. Before there was a jail trust, there was the sheriff, I did the, had the responsibility to jail. Are you for the sheriff getting the responsibility of the jail or do you think it should stay under the jail trust?
Why not? Yeah, absolutely. First of all, as a person that is an attorney, I want to look at all the facts, I want to see everything that's going on. And when I'm elected County Commissioner, I'm sure I'm going to learn a lot of things that the public are not aware of. So I, as I said before, the facts, the evidence, and also the law. So we want to focus on those things. The first thing we need to do is find a CEO, and we need to conduct a national search and find the best person who we believe is the most qualified to lead us in making sure that there are not deaths every other month at the Oklahoma County Jail that is a safe place and humane place. But as far as the, the trust, I want to bring everyone together. I, I can't say at this point in time what way I will go as far as the trust because I want to bring everyone together, I want to bring the judges together, I want to bring the prosecutors together, I want to bring the legislature together, the County Commissioners, and most importantly, I want to bring the public together to figure this out and figure out how we should move forward collectively. We got to make sure our community is safe, and it has to be safe for the inmates and also has to be safe for the employees. So I want to get everyone together once I'm County Commissioner to figure out a great path forward and how we can move together.
So you talked about finding a new CEO. So what else do you think needs to occur for the county, Oklahoma County, to operate a more humane jail, so while safeguarding the public's rights to safety?
Mental health, I think mental health treatment is, is just so very important. And going back to a client, you know, I'm at the Oklahoma County Jail every other week. So folks, I've seen the bedbugs, I've seen the lack of mental health care. I've seen, I've experienced the lack of heat, so I've seen these things, so I know exactly what's going on, and I've been on every single floor of the Oklahoma County Jail. And this is something that I've been dealing with over the last twenty years as a, as a lawyer. So what I want to see, you know, when I have clients that are arrested, someone goes to see them, a mental health professional goes to see it, but they set an appointment six weeks out. We need wraparound services immediately, we need to get these people help immediately, not six weeks later. So I want to make sure that they have, uh, uh, mental health experts have access to the jail. I want to make sure that our health department has unfeathered access. We're not filing lawsuits trying to prevent them from seeing what violations are taking place. We want unfathered, feathered access to our health department. We want to make sure we have access to all of, uh, our mental health professionals have access as well.
So it's, the jail's underfunded, they don't have it, you've just said that. The new jail that they're, we've already given $260 million towards the new jail, the voters approved $260 million. My question to you is, is that how there's proposals that we do a property tax or a sales tax? Are you for the property tax, sales tax, not against those things to fund the new jail?
No, at this time, absolutely not. I think we have $260 million. I think we could build a smaller facility, and I have a great proposal. We actually have a jail that is already built, ready to go, that actually houses inmates today. And you know what that jail is located? That jail is located at the Oklahoma County Courthouse, it's on the thirteenth floor. We can use that to house individuals that are violent. And secondly, what we need to do is not arrest everyone for nonviolent offenses, not arrest everyone for little misdemeanor offenses. That's why our jail is overcrowded and we have a, a lack of staff. So we could house them there while we build a new, smaller jail with $260 million, it's a lot of money. Or we could definitely build a facility where we build a jail there, right behind the parking lot of the current site, or right behind the jail at the current site, and also a jail at the county courthouse. That's enough space and we can get it done.
Right, let, before you ask your next question, I'm going to pop in here. I'm going to pop in here because you're about to start the new 2025 legislative session.
Yes, so.
And so I'm just going to ask you, what are the big topics that you all might be talking about?
Education, 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 I think that's a big topic. Also, bibles in, in schools, that's also a major topic. For me, criminal justice reform is always on top of my personal list. I'm just so very happy of the accomplishments I've, I've been able to get done as a legislate, legislator at the Capitol. We got a bill passed last session with my great friend Senator Matthews that deals with law enforcement, making sure that law enforcement officers receive de-escalation training. And, and the reason, you know, I pushed forward on that bill was the Flower Man. I don't even know who the Flower Man is. And he did not receive, you know, I, I think a fair shake as far as being shot practically in the back. And, you know, officers need to get the training when dealing with individuals in a mental health crisis. So we're very proud of that bill, we got that out of the House, we got it out of the Senate, and we got it signed by the governor. So that is the law of the land today, so we're very excited about that. I'm also excited, as Black Caucus Chairman, we were able to raise one hundred, you're going to love this one. We were able to raise $140,000 for Langston University. So, you know, those are the type of things, I, I, I love to do this, give it back to the community. As you know, too, we had a low law firm family fun day where we give away free school supplies, health screenings to kids every single year. We had a great event at Millwood High School last year, that's been phenomenal. We've been doing it for ten years, so way before I was an elected official, we've been giving back to the community on the, you know, on the ground, making sure that our kids get the best possible opportunity there is.
Jason, you've given us some great information today. So take a couple of minutes and tell everyone why they should vote for you.
Ooh, I think I'm, you know, my, my opponents are good people, but I think I'm the most qualified person for this role. This role deals with Oklahoma County Jail. This is not a time to not take this seriously. People are dying, folks, people are dying, and you need someone who's going to prevent that. You need someone that's going to fight for you, you need someone that is an attorney that knows the law and knows how to advocate for certain things or certain policies that will help people and also prevent that. So as a person that has served as a legislator since 2016, I just believe I'm the most qualified and I can get the job done and I can start immediately as far as moving forward and making sure that the jail is safe, that our roads and bridges are repaired, that our public safety is paramount as well. So I'm excited, I'm excited about this campaign. I'm, you know, when I knock on doors and they're like, hey, you're the guy on the radio. I really enjoy it, I really, I really enjoy that. And, you know, so I, I'm very excited about it, and I'm asking the voters for their support. You guys know, you guys know what I've been doing in the community over the last several years. You know I care about our community, and I want to care about the entire District One as well. So I'm very excited about the campaign and how we're moving forward.
Man, you've named out about ten responsibilities today, but one thing I know is although you're running for District One, you have day-to-day responsibilities for the House Representatives, you're going to be there.
Oh yes.
So I think we're going to do a couple of things. Tell people how to get in touch with you at the Capitol.
Okay.
So go ahead and get, how do they get in touch?
You didn't get in contact with me at the Capitol? And I always, I don't like giving out numbers. What I like to do is say, I am on the fourth, or fifth floor, room 541, come see me, come see me. Come see me. And that's the best way you do it as far as engaging a politician, not calling them. Uh, come, come see me. Come see exactly what I'm doing on the House floor, how I'm voting. And, and then come to my office and say, hey, why did you vote that way? Or, well, how does the process work? Uh, so come see me at the Capitol and uh hold me accountable, hold the other legislators accountable. Because we got a lot of work to do. This is the Trump era. Uh, he has the House, he has the Senate. It's gonna be a tough four years. It's gonna be a tough four years. So it's about time that people, our people, everyone that's a Democrat, come forward and, and independents, uh, come forward and come together and, and push back.
Absolutely. Well, how do people get in contact with you on social media?
Uh, lowfoocommissioner.com. Yeah. Contact me.
So we will make sure to tag all of his pages, so you can um get in contact with him on this episode um as well. So uh, we are on all of our major platforms, all social media, major platforms on Spotify and YouTube podcasting. So catch us there. Join us. Look at all of our other episodes and make sure you're tuning into their, their episodes.
Pretty good episodes though. Pretty good.
So Representative Lowe, again, I wanna thank you so much for being here. And I, we agree, you are the representative of the best district in all Oklahoma. But I want all of our, all our listeners, followers, just to remember that this is an amazing day.
And let's go make the best of it.